Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Approval of the agenda. We have updated agenda. Seven C has been removed. Is there any other changes? Counsel? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that removal?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify with say and aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the June 18th, 2025 regular meeting. You all received them in your packet. Is there any questions or concerns? Or corrections needed within those minutes? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 18th meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi.
Okay.
Second by Scott.
Works.
Call the question, all those in favor signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries, four in favor, none against, one abstention. Brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Our public open forum is now closed. We will now move on to public hearings. We will recess the regular council meeting and enter into our public hearing. We have one public hearing before us this evening in accordance with the official mailed and public notice in the matter of public hearing for our road vacation petition, Lake Shore Drive, Brad and Kristy Kirko. It is our intention that everyone has the opportunity to be heard. If you wish to speak, please sign in on the signup sheet at the back of the room. The procedure is as follows. Presentation by staff followed by questions of staff, then public input. Raise your hand. When recognized by the mayor, approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. State your comments and position. No one will be allowed to speak a second time until everyone has had a chance to be heard. First, we will hear questions for clarification. Second, public in favor of the proposal. Third, public speaking against the proposal. After everyone who wishes to speak has had the opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed. After closure of the public hearing, the council will deliberate and take action as appropriate. Members of the audience do not participate in the council's discussion unless the majority of the council concedes to hear additional information or questions. The hearing is now in session. Victory?
Okay. The city has received a petition for the vacation of part of Lake Shore Drive adjacent to lot seven, eight, and nine of block four, Country Club Edition, located at 807 Lake Shore Drive. And this is the public hearing to hear that request. The original Lake Shore Drive was not placed in its platted location, which that plat happened, I believe, in 1929. This left wide areas of road right of way outside of the driving lane in various areas along the road. This occurred on both sides of the road. In an effort to clear up the title and property lines for Sock Center Country Club Golf Course, it was back in 2014, the city and the owner reached an agreement where the curb line of the golf course side would become the property line of the golf course with an additional 20 feet of easement behind the curb for utilities. The city deeded everything to the golf course on its side of the curb. The golf course deeded everything to the city on the roadside of the curb. As a result, the road right of way became very wide in some areas, such as in front of the petition property. The proposed vacation takes into account the new right of way, including the 20 feet of right of way behind the opposite curb, and measures back 66 feet to the new proposed right of way. It is likely other owners along the roadway will probably come back with similar petitions to vacate. You can see on the survey that I gave you on page 12 of your packet, you can kind of see where the golf course road actually exists, and then you can see the property line, and you can see how it deviates quite a ways into the property. So if the council determines that this excess right of way is no longer needed by the city, it should consider granting their request, and then we would deed that property to the adjacent landowner. The survey that you have does lay out the exact location of the petition and also the legal description of the property to be vacated. Any questions?
Any questions? Concerns? Anyone understands how they did things in 1929?
Not really what.
So with that, no questions, and we'll ask for any public input. Is there anyone here that wants to speak to the council in favor, against, or needs clarification? Do we have anyone that wants to speak in favor, against, or needs clarification on the proposal? Is there anyone that wants to know more information? Or speak in favor or against the proposal? I just got one question. All the other property owners have, can do the same thing? They just need to come in with a?
They could, they could petition, we just would need a survey, or they could all get together and join together for a survey.
Okay.
I would just need legal descriptions of each individual part to deed back to them.
Okay. And we didn't have any handwritten, or anyone call in about any of this?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to cover that base. So with that, any other last minute questions or concerns? Then I will close our public hearing and reconvene our regular council meeting. We'll go into reports and presentations. EDA report?
The EDA met in regular session today, July 2nd, not June, as I had on there. They did review the options for Cana Avenue construction, and it grew a little bit into including connecting to the Walmart parking lot. So we're going to be reviewing with tractor supply for their contribution to that. Before, we were just going to meet up with where tractor supply was ending, but after having some conversation, it kind of makes sense for us to construct all the way to the Walmart parking lot for consistency of the roadway, be the same tonnage, the curb, and everything, and then have tractor supply, give money back to the city for that. So the developer is reaching out to them. So hopefully, we'll have something in the next few weeks because we would, we're really getting close to the end of where we can do a change order to get our existing contractor in there. The other thing we talked about is the potential layout of the development of that 42 acres next to Walmart, including future roads and utility layouts. We talked about some potential buyers or tenants. We did have the developer's representative there. He has a new developer realtor, I guess, in his employ. So we talked to him about potential types of businesses that could be there based on the restrictions that Walmart has on the property and also the airport restrictions. So doing a little bit along that, and then also, we're looking at having and updating our hotel feasibility study. So that's something I'll be reaching out to some professionals that do those and get some quotes on what that would cost. So no action tonight since the Cana Avenue was delayed.
Okay. Any questions, concerns? Okay. Park Board report?
So the Park Board met last night in regular session, Tuesday, July 1st. They approved moving their meeting nights to the first Wednesday at 5:00 PM. So it'll be before the council meeting on the first Wednesday. They did receive their update on the trail project. Could possibly still be paving this week, but since they've been paving in our project, may not be doing the trails till next week. They selected a date for moving in the park, July 14th, pending availability, and availability is of the sound people and et cetera. So we're still going to try one more time, it's been rained out three times now. They approved outfield advertising at Tower View Park for the baseball association. Rather than the metal signs, they'll be doing the, like the banner type signs. And so that's something I believe they would implement next year. They received a request from the Rotary to install a large Adirondack chair in St. Clair Lewis Park, kind of by where the musical notes are or were. Received a request for high amp outlets for St. Clair Lewis Park for food trucks. They want 30 and 50 amp outlets around that parking lot. And also, they discussed the request for the electrical outlets at Little Red Schoolhouse. So these are things that we're getting estimates, and they may go into the budget at budget time. They did select a replacement playground structure. We did have some damage up at J.C. Park, and so that structure has to be replaced. And then Chalk and Sock, part on the avenue, will now be the last weekend in September. It got rained out as well. And the second cabin is ready for occupancy pending delivery of mattresses. So we're just getting a lot of interest in the, in those camper cabins. The minute people find out we have them, they're reserving something. So we're anxious to get the second one. I don't want to cut it loose though till the mattresses fill up. So otherwise, I have no action for the council as from the Park Board tonight.
Okay. Questions? Concerns? Okay. And we will go to city engineer report. Keith?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Well, our project is speeding right along. It's going, everything's going very, very well at this point. No real major issues at all have come up. If you've been out there just in the last day or so, we are actually paving on the project. So by midday tomorrow, seven blocks will have pavement on it. So that's pretty, pretty impressive for the, whatever it be, the third day of July. Normally, we're not paving by this early in the project, so that's really, that's really nice. The Deep Storm sewer on Eighth Street is, will be complete maybe by the end of the day tomorrow. There won't be working quite a full day with the holiday weekend, but it's getting close on that. All the utilities, we anticipate the next two full weeks should probably, everything basically south of Fifth, we may be done with all the utilities, or it'll be getting close. You know, between two to three weeks, that should all be done. Next week, we'll start some more curb and gutter work on Seventh and, well, basically Seventh, I guess, will be done and a couple other blocks in there, so we'll be working on that. So yeah, things are going really quite well. The residents have been really nice to work with, and that's all going well, and very little issues. It's just seems to be humming right along with knock on wood. Hopefully, everything will continue to stay that way, but things are going really well. Even with all the rain and all that sand out there, really isn't impacting the schedule at all at this point. So you know, it won't be too long. I would say in August, we'll be down to the last four blocks of utility work. That's just finishing up the street work. Now, when I say the streets are paved and that, they are working in the boulevard areas behind the curb, so that's actively being worked on as well. So they're not finished, but at least some of it is a nice driving surface now at this point. So all's well. So any questions you might have with me?
Questions?
Brad, what percentage? I would say we're about.
You kind of read my mind.
Yeah. We're, I would say we're about a third, maybe, maybe a hair under a third, but somewhere as 30% to 33% should be complete, I would say at this point. So right on schedule, I would say. I would say we're probably, from what the schedule was originally proposed to us, we're with, either on it. We might even be a few days ahead, a few days behind, but we're very, very close to right on the schedule. So yeah.
On the streets that paved, I'm sure they're going to start working on sidewalks?
Yep. Yeah. See, if you happen to be out there, they're already doing some like grading behind there, so the next thing we'll follow will be the sidewalks behind. So all that boulevard work will get started. So it's just kind of a constant moving process, if you will. So yeah, things are, as I said, I'm very, very pleased with how things are going so far. Very little issues, actually, in terms of like little design issues, things that come up. We've had virtually nothing so far, so.
We've had a, looks like another detour on Ash this week. Is that detour work pretty much complete?
That, that was just to do the paving, that patch. So that's done. In fact, the signs, other than they forgot the two signs at the very far ends.
Right.
So I've already told them to get those out of there. So all the rest of the signs are already gone. So that was just for that patch.
Thanks.
That was, I'm glad you mentioned it because I meant to mention that that patch is done on Ash Street as well. So now, it's patched all the way up to the top, which means when we come back to actually do the final, we'll actually mill an inch and a half off of that and then put a, you know, finish wear course over that when it's done. So it's just, we don't want to have that bump in there. It's easier just to pave it all the way up and then mill it out, so yeah. And that's, Deep Storm sewer is going pretty well, slow as we anticipated, but you know, that's really the hardest part of the job. And they're through, they're already, you know, halfway between Pine and Main. And so it's shallow now, and everything is, they've run into the one area that we knew there was going to be water, and sure enough, there is water there, but they're working way through it. It's, it's not that much water, so it's not really been an issue. So, but that all went well, and you know, I was a little concerned about that because of the narrow space, but you know, double boxed it and double hoed it, and it worked out, you know, quite well through there. So yeah, it was good. Anything for me.
Okay. Well, Brad covered my Eighth Street question, Ash Street closure question. Center Point, I know they're outside of the scope of our project necessarily up, but did they communicate that they're changing meters on houses within the project area, anything like that?
I was, I was not aware of that, actually. So if they did, then that's just something I guess they're doing, so.
Okay. Because yeah, that homeowner mentioned that to me, and I'm like, I don't know if they've communicated that to us, and no, it's not within that, but I thought I'd bring it up and ask at least, see if they reached out.
Yeah, I didn't know that. Even, I can tell you, like even at my house, Excel showed up one day and changed the meters, like, oh, I didn't know that was happening, but they, they just.
Just don't happen to coincide.
So I think they just, sometimes just do that stuff.
Okay.
Yeah. And there, all that small utility work is pretty well done in that area, so they do have, I think, a little more work once we get to that north end, but that's, but they're largely done as well. Michael's was doing that work as a sub for them, so it's going pretty good.
And they've opened up quite a few sidewalks, so I'm assuming they're going to get those concreted back in. I'm thinking up along, even St. Clair Lewis, they were opening up sidewalks and areas.
Have to get those patch back in.
I know.
We don't, you know, control them quite as much, but we try to, from a city perspective, try to say, hey, you guys got to put this back. I know they left, I saw one hole that they've kind of just left there, and it's kind of like, well, they do have some cones around it, but it's like, well, why don't you fill it back in, you know, so it's not a hazard? But I'll, I'll talk to those guys about that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Keith.
One last thing, because we talked about before, the South Industrial Park, schedule on that. That contractor is coming into town, actually, they have a project with, with the city. So they're going to do it at that time, so it's, that's going to be in the first half of August. I don't know the exact date, but that's when they'll do. That's all patched down there, so it's okay, but that's the timeline for coming in and getting that repaired.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Move on to action items. Seven A, approved resolution 2025-57, vacating excess road right of way.
So this is the action for the public hearing. As you said, so this is, if you choose to vacate it, it's resolution 2025-57, approving the vacation of the road right of way.
Questions? Concerns? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution 2025-57?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Any last minute discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify with say and aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries, four in favor, none against, one abstention. Seven B, approved pay request number three to Keakley.
So as you said, this is payment request three. This is for the 2025 Birds and Pine Street project. We have paid to date so far, $1,161,496,04. This request is for an additional $446,071,02, and this is all against their total contract amount, which is 4.772 million. So as far as when it gets completed, and then it has to go through the engineer, and it has to get sent out, so you can't really look at that as a percent complete because it's always a few weeks behind where they actually are on the project. But this request is for pay request number three to Keakley Underground for the $446,071,02.
Questions? Concerns? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve pay request number three?
So.
Motion by Brad, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, signify with say and aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven D, approve SCDP agreements, Arrow Health.
And this is from the EDA's meeting, not this month, but last month. We've been working on this, an application from Arrow Health and Sock Center for SCDP, which is a Small City Development Program funds to assist with the renovation of their existing building and the addition of a handicapped accessible restroom. The eligible costs for the project are for code deficient items and for accessibility upgrades. The costs for this project include electrical and plumbing upgrades, is what we would participate in. The EDA recommends the city participate with up to 20,500 upgrades, of which the city would pay 70%. 40% was that loan that becomes a grant over 10 years, and 30%, which is a zero interest loan, which would be payable back to the city upon sale of the project. The owner would pay the other 30%, so the total cost to the city is $14,350. So what we're looking for tonight is to approve the SCDP participation with Arrow Health, up to $14,350 contingent on receiving all the required documentation, which is invoices from contractors that are registered with SAM, which makes them eligible for these federal dollars.
Okay. Questions? Concerns? Do I have a motion to approve the SCDP participation?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brad. Any more discussion, last minute questions? Call the question, all those in favor, signify with say and aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, Heron Parcel Acquisition.
This is just an update on the Heron property purchase. We did receive the preliminary draft of the settlement on June 18th. We submitted to the FAA on June 19th for their review. Then we got the assigned purchase agreement and settle agreement on June 26th. This was, what, last week?
Yep.
Yeah, last week. But the city council, you'd indicated it was considered upon FAA approvals. We were still waiting for that, for the administrative settlement. Day before yesterday, we had a team's meeting with the FAA, and today we closed. So we now own the property. So it was a long project to get through, but we did, we were successful in getting it closed, and now the process of the grant application with all the submittal requirements will come. The Heron part of the settlement agreement is that they will cooperate with getting us all the documentation that we need. If they don't, then our avenue, of course, is litigation and attorney fees and everything, and we don't want to go there, but there is a lot of documentation that we will need, so. But we can, we can at least say that we now have put that to bed, so that's a good thing.
That is a relief, to a certain extent. New business, storm claim, June 20th.
This is just, has a little bit of update on that storm on June 20th. We did file an insurance claim with the League of Minnesota Cities, and the adjuster came on that following Tuesday, June 24th. So we were able to go through everything and, and the things that qualify for insurance reimbursement. We have 23 trees that were located within 100 feet of an insured structure in city parks and campground. Anything out 20, outside of 100 feet of an insured structure, then we don't qualify for reimbursement. So this basically, I'll give you $250 a tree so you can plant a new tree. We get wages for the personnel for their debris removal activities and the cost of the use of equipment for debris removal. That's where the fee schedule comes in for the equipment. A replacement of the bathroom roof at St. Clair Lewis Park, that tree came through the roof and through the ceiling of the men's bathroom. Repair of the, repair of the shingles on the band shelf, cleaning up water infiltration at the library, replacement of the play equipment at J.C. Park, replacement of three sections of chain link fence at the dog park, there's a screen door at the campground, two light pools in St. Clair Lewis Park, and multiple picnic tables. So these are all of the things that we adjust, we identified with the insurance adjuster, and now it's just a matter of getting all of this done and then submit for reimbursement from them. So it's just kind of an update of the types of things we were able to get recovery from for the insurance.
Okay. Any questions about that? Then we will move on to 2026 budget planning.
This is a schedule just proposed for the 2026 budget, and like I said, said to Warren, I said, this is fluid, I know you all have schedules. But by the 15th of July, I hope to have the year-to-date numbers to all the department heads with, for their budget worksheets. And then following that, I'd like to get the operations committee to meet with the department heads for their capital improvement planning for their updates. And then by the 9th of August, to get the, back to meet from the department heads. Then it goes on to the finance committee for review, review and input, and then get the, back to the city council, the 5th of September. You have your budget workshop on the 10th of September, and we adopt it on the 24th of September. And then the final is 3rd of December. So that kind of gives you a timeline of how we, we try to stay as close to that as we can. Obviously, it takes time to get them put together and back from department heads and then coordinate meetings, but if we can stay as close to that timeline as possible, that would be helpful.
Would that option of preliminary budget be the September 17th meeting at the second council meeting of the month?
No, we adopt it at the regular meeting. We do the workshop.
But wouldn't the, the regular meeting be the 17th in September? That'd be the 3rd Wednesday?
Yeah.
No, the 3rd and the 17th.
You don't want three weeks meeting every week in that month?
Well, I'd be gone the 24th, I think, so.
Oh, okay. Just kidding.
Good catch.
Yes. Any questions or concerns? All right. Then we will move on to our consent agenda. We have a schedule of claims. Ah, gotta find it. Where'd it go? Right there. And paid claims of $928,347.97 for a total of the same. We have a resolution 2025-58, accepting contributions from, of $172.75 from the men's card playing group to be allocated to the senior center. $1,000 from Community Connection of Sock Center to be allocated to the ambulance department. $750 from the Sock Center Lions Club for the outdoor rink, and $25,000 from the Sock Center Fire Department Relief Association to be allocated to the fire department. And on behalf of the city and the city council, I want to thank those groups and, for their donations. We have a request from Angie Marthor representing the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 67 to amend an application and permit for a four-day temporary on-sale liquor license during the St., during the St. Clair Lewis days from the fairgrounds to the American Legion from July 16th through the 19th. Then we also have a resolution number 2025-59, approving an off-site gambling permit for the Melrose Lions. The permit will allow for pull tabs and tip boards to be held on September 26th, 2025, at the Sock Center Civic Arena. Do I have any questions or concerns? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve, approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion. I'll make a motion.
Okay. Motion by Joe.
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any last minute discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify with say and aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Informational items, Trunk Highway 71 reconstruction update.
So that reconstruction of Trunk Highway 71, the project continues to move forward. We had a meeting on June 25th. At that meeting, the big picture plans were reviewed. We input, we provided input back to the design engineer and the project manager. The city engineer did provide documents back to them regarding the city utilities. There's several components that we're working through. They have the environmental, wetlands, cultural, historical, and archaeological. That's a bunch of different, I put them all in one line, but they're a bunch of different sections. The design of the pedestrian areas, we have decorative lights, benches, trees, bump outs. Preliminary road layout easements, road right of way, ADA. There's a public outreach and education component, state historical review, hydraulics and stormwater and all that permitting, traffic control, signals, lighting, or roundabouts. The utility coordination with gas, fiber, and electric telecom. Then the bridge is a separate project. City utilities, how they get included into the project, and then there'll be a cooperative agreement with the city. So they have a very large schedule that they work through and that they have assigned, and so we're just kind of fitting into our areas that we need to be. But at this point, the project design is underway, and MinDOT is requesting the city create and coordinate a local advisory committee to provide input and feedback on design elements and also to educate the community. The committee would include a representative from the business community, downtown, historical, maintenance, governance, community groups, et cetera. Also, providing education to the public would be part of their assignment. This would include social media, newsletters, website, email blast, speaking, advanced pop-ups, et cetera. So I do have some ideas right now of some people to put together. We're looking for eight to 10 people that can attend. If anybody get their recommendations back to me, and we'll try to put that together and get that back to MinDOT, so we can start meeting with them and talk about what they would want to be. A lot of it's going to be teams meeting or electronically. They'll push out stuff for us to say, okay, look at this project we did in this city, you know, take a look at that and see what you think, and to provide the feedback back. And they want a diverse group of people to represent the different areas of the community, so. Just get, get back to me who you think might work well on that committee, and we'll try to put it together. I can't take everybody, but. I can't take everybody, but... And then there will be meetings. They'll be coming here, you know, to a council meeting and to some public input as well. And then a lot of it is going to be web-based, where you can go on and you can look at the street block by block and see what you like and don't like and provide comments, so. It seems to be working very well. And the one thing they did do, though, is they took out, the stoplights by Holiday are